Yeah, everybody, we just need to get them in their seats.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
All right. You said baseball cap.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You did it.
A week ago and it was beautiful.
I know. It was like a week earlier. All right. Good evening. My name is Eric Rodriguez. I serve as the interim public relations director for the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe, and I'm honored tonight to be invited here with our Onion Creek singers and members of our tribal council. Tonight, as we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, we would like to start the meeting with a formal song on behalf of the Onion Creek Singers. I ask that everybody that is able to please stand as we recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day today. So please kick it away, Onion Creek drum. Chee-mu-geech to the Onion Creek Singers for sharing a small piece of our culture here tonight, and thank you to the city of Mount Pleasant for allowing us to start the meetings here tonight with that celebration. Thank you.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, October 9th, 2023 at 7:04. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Nishinabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ajiway, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Nishinabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take the role. Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher, or Alseger?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. At this time, we will have a present proclamation of recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Sorry, my tongue just got tied there for a second.
Whereas the indigenous people of this land have inhabited these territories for thousands of years, cultivating vibrant cultures, traditions, and rich histories that are intricate to the fabric of our nation. And whereas the injustices and hardships endured by the indigenous peoples throughout history, including forced displacement, violence, and discrimination, have left lasting scars. And whereas we honor the resilience and strength of the indigenous peoples who have persisted in the face of adversity, preserving their languages, customs, and spiritual practices for future generations. And whereas we acknowledge that Indigenous Peoples' Day provides an opportunity for all individuals to learn about the diverse cultures, languages, and traditions of indigenous peoples and to engage in meaningful dialogue to promote understanding, respect, and reconciliation. Now therefore, I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby recognize October 9th, 2023 as a day of remembrance for the indigenous peoples. And further, the Mount Pleasant City Commission encourages our residents to reflect upon and recognize the ongoing struggles and challenges faced by indigenous communities and stand in solidarity with them. And furthermore, the City of Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the value of working collaboratively together with the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and looks forward to fostering a spirit of inclusivity, respect, and cooperation within our community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the City of Mount Pleasant, Michigan on this ninth day of October, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor Perschbacher. And with us today, we have our tribal chief, Teresa Peters-Jackson, our sub-chief, Jennifer Wasagijic, and our council treasurer, Gail Rule. And I'm going to turn it over to Chief Peters-Jackson for a few words.
Hi, good evening. I'm Teresa Peters-Jackson. I'd like to thank my fellow council members, Subchief Wasagijic and Treasurer Gail Rule, then Eric, our PR guy. And especially like to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for all you, for what you have done. It's truly an honor to be recognized as a native people and have our culture and our language and our traditions valued. It's been a long time and we truly appreciate it. And on behalf of our our tribal membership, I'd like to thank you guys from the bottom of our heart. And I, you know, I think our Onion Creek Singers, which they left already. A dose of psalmic, you know, but most of all, we need to thank the Lord, our Creator. He's blessed all of us. Not only our community, but he's blessed the city, you know, and the tribe. As tribal people, we share our blessings with the community, you know. I know super top funding is there. However, we do support other charitable organizations throughout the city and the county. So we truly appreciate you guys' blessings and you guys' recognizing our culture from the bottom of my heart and our and our tribal membership, our tribal council. We truly thank you and we appreciate it. So me gueach and hope you guys have a blessed year.
Me gueach. At this time, we will move on to our next item, which is additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone on the commission have any additions or deletions they'd like to express at this time? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move.
Wait a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? No. Motion carries. At this time, we have public input on agenda items. If you wish to speak about something that is on the agenda tonight, you may step to the podium. You'll be given five minutes. You may, you will be asked to state your name and address, and then your five minutes will begin. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be let into the meeting, asked your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this time? Make a line. Your name?
Hey, Alex Swick. I live out at 1703 West Pickard Street over on the the west end of town. I just wanted to voice my support for the proposal regarding, I guess, a restructuring of the regulations we have regarding lawn height and natural landscaping. I think it's a really good idea. It could do a lot to, as the presentation says, increase the biodiversity of our community as well as kind of relieve the burden on homeowners to, you know, do a constant stream of lawn maintenance, hopefully. So a big proponent of that. I just wanted to voice my support tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex.
Hello, my name is Claire DeBlanc. I live at 1029 Douglas Street. And I am with the Office of Central Sustainability at CMU, where we work to institutionalize sustainability at Central Michigan University and the surrounding community. And I wanted to talk about the law and ordinance as well. So turf grass lawns and cultivated lawns, which is what the current ordinance allows, require a lot of upkeeping, including use of fossil fuels for mowing, harmful pesticides, increased water needs, and ecosystem-disrupting fertilizers. In order to transition to a more sustainable community, we need to realize the beauty in native ecosystems and make this the standard instead of conventional grass lawns. Additionally, most cultivated flowers, trees, and shrubs used for lawns are not native to Michigan, displacing native species and contributing to habitat loss and requiring more resources. And all this leads to biodiversity loss. So overall, we want to encourage the intentional incorporation of native plants that would not currently be allowed under the ordinance due to their height and uncultivated appearance and give community members the option to grow their lawns. So central sustainability is in support of seeing the city code changed to allow for more natural landscaping practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
Richard Bowen, 110 North Kinney. This is a good time to thank our City of Mount Pleasant workers who contribute to remarkably help our community and their well-being. Thanks to our mayor and our city commissioners who regularly express thanks to our workers in every city department. Tonight, let us narrow our focus on the professional experience to dedicated, full-time Mount Pleasant firefighters who recently checked my rental. Every time the bells and alarms explode, their trucks loudly shout out to us their active response, which also triggers their previous traumas as they are again called out as first responders. To again face with us our traumatic danger, devastation, destruction, grief, suffering, emotional distress, and losses we will again with them endure. They work hard during the calls on site to deal professionally, but we should appreciate how they also daily must create and maintain a cohesive small unit consciously maintaining the mental health of each unit member every hour of every day, keeping a watchful eye and ear on every fellow firefighter. To mitigate these triggers and residual trauma that accumulate as I care for our neighbors and friends. They are at the same time committed to health and welfare of every person who lives here in their city of Mount Pleasant and environments. Mount Pleasant, the place where many firefighters grew up, the place where many sat in our classrooms graduating over the last 30 years from our local schools. Here is our local homes, the schools where their kids attend. They have perhaps been living and working daily amidst you in your daily lives for 30 years. Engaging actively your kids for their civics lesson as students when your kids and grandkids visit the fire hall and the same fire hall that you built where firefighters live, eat, and work all night, several nights a week, separately from their family who need them. To be ever vigilant when you need them, so they step aside from their families who need them to provide services to you. They know how fast a fire spreads. Some say faster than a man can run. Their whole family is committed to the knowledge of a fire and a quick response needed to preventively "I help you." And prevention, of course, is the planning key. The evacuation map you made should help your family. You are aware they visited your kids in the classroom. Your children subsequently brought their civics lessons home and worked with you in planning family evacuation maps, actively going down the prevention checklist, like checking your house alarms that may be the only means to alert you, whether awake or asleep. You check to see your exits are open and plans complete. Your home clean and cleaned up, yes. Some of you recall the firefighters who came to your rental each year, checking carefully with you like they did with me. And as you get out easily, they also concern that they can get in during a fire, at risk to their own life, to evacuate you or to assess the nature of the fire and what needs to be done, yes. And their family knows their risks and sacrifices are for you, each of you, yes. The lifetime of commitment to the community, their regular training, their daily persistence, their constant vigilance for your life, your safety, and your health. So now we focus on them. We stop momentarily to wear and share their mantle of leadership, to thank them for them wearing the mantle of service in a responsible and accountable manner, some of them full-time, to make sure their jobs are secure, some full-time jobs with decent salaries. Our investment in them is our, they're our investment in the solidarity and growth of our Mount Pleasant economy. The dollars they earn are spent in this community and the multiplier effect times seven enriches our city economy every month. Our economy grows several times what we spend on them every month. So we actively reject austerity cuts that cut off the lifeblood of the economy times seven in a single damaging act that rips out and damages our community tapestry permanently, damages their unit lives and security and wholeness to never be repaired or replaced once torn apart. We remind ourselves about that so we know why we do what we do. We will not recognize or reward those who cut budgets and salaries and personnel for personal bonuses or personal job advancement. We speak and take action to care for our community members, to protect them and their families. We assume the mantle of responsibility and accountability. They and their families must remain complete and whole, healthy and vibrant for another year. We express our responsible thanks to the firefighters. We express our annual thanks to all our Mount Pleasant department workers this fall for their service. Thanks to you, the city commissioners, including Brian Chapman, who believes that we all should be reasonable commissioners. I wish you safety and a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Hello, my name is Eric Chercover. I live at 318 East Cherry Street, right here in town. And I don't know how to follow that except to say that, yes, firefighters are professional heroes. I was in New York on a particularly dark day, so I'm aware of that. I just wanted to talk very briefly about, reiterate what some people have already said about the law and ordinance. I forget the name of the actual the code, but I'm really glad that you're willing to take it up and talk about it, listen to what we have to say. I support amending it so that those who wish to, people who want to have a clean, green monoculture lawn, they can keep doing that. But those of us who want to have something that is more diverse, biodiverse, have the option to do that without being cited for being, you know, in violation of such a thing. I think it's the wave of the future. And I read the packet that you sent out. I just wanted to speak very briefly about two aspects of it. The first one is aesthetics, which I think is a very kind of, what's the word? It can be kind of arbitrary. I think one person's beautiful thing is someone else's, "Oh, that's appalling. We don't like that. We don't like the way that looks." As a matter of fact, I was looking at the comparisons between the cultivated and the uncultivated, and I rather liked the uncultivated more because I knew that it was more diverse. And some of the cultivated stuff, as I think you might have mentioned, are actually not native plants. So we can do a whole lot to benefit. Well, I mean, we all have little bits to play, little roles to play in making the planet a more habitable place. There's two books that I really, really like that I thought I would just bring to your attention, and I can always email you later if you'd like to. One of them is called Redesigning the American Lawn: A Search for Environmental Harmony. It's by Yale University Press, and it's really cool. And it tells you, gives you the history of sort of how the lawn, the green carpet lawn, became the standard bearer and why it's not such a good thing. And this other book, which I also love, is by Douglas Delm Talami. Never mind. His name doesn't matter. No, it matters, but it's called Bringing Nature Home. And it's also about gardening with native plants, trying to bring wilderness home in a way that's something that we could all sort of agree with. So I felt the notion that the the code was based in part by aesthetic considerations to be quite arbitrary. The other concern I had was with respect to mosquitoes. Mosquitoes breed in standing water. That's it. That's where they're bred. They can hide in grass. Anyone can hide in grass. But tall grass is not a mosquito concern. Also, and this will be my last point, and I'll let you guys get on with your evening. In spite of the fact that, yeah, mosquitoes do carry diseases that are serious, but we don't see them in that much prevalence here in this part of the world. We may if if climate change continues, and that is a concern. But mosquitoes aren't, I mean, no one wants to be stung by a mosquito and no one wants to get, oh, I don't know, West Nile virus.
West Nile.
Sorry?
West Nile.
No, I don't think anyone wants to get that, and I wouldn't wish it on anyone. But mosquitoes are also pollinators and a source of food to a number of birds and other wild, wonderful wild things. It's innumerable. So they are not to be eradicated. A world without mosquitoes, even though we don't like being stung or bitten by mosquitoes, is not a world you want to live in. It's be like a world without honeybees. So I like the idea of giving every homeowner an opportunity to landscape their home the way they want to without any kind of fear of reprisal. That's, that's all I think, that's my, that's my hope here, is that everyone has the choice to do what they want with their property. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric.
Hi, my name's Juelen Dulusha. I live at 634 South University Avenue, and I just want to join the other voices tonight in support of revising the mowing and noxious weed ordinance. I'd like to point to two specific things that I would love to see included or revised. One would be, I would like to see specific guidelines for natural planned landscaping. And these guidelines are already in other Michigan communities, I believe, just looking really on the internet this afternoon, Royal Oak has them, Madison Heights has them, Ferndale has them. And they provide specific guidelines for community members like myself who would like to come up with a more natural scheme for their garden. I'm also really deeply concerned about the emphasis that the current code and the materials tonight placed on the word cultivation and cultivated species. I'm, I'm not an expert in gardening, but I am an avid gardener, and cultivated plants are often understood as those that come from a gardening center and that are bought. So my concern with the emphasis on cultivated species and cultivation in the current code is that some folks could read it as excluding native species and native planting. And I just wanted to, because of course I looked at the materials for today and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, I don't want to support something that's going to harm people's, you know, the public health of my community. I have young children. I certainly don't want them contracting malaria, Zika, I think dengue fever were cited in the presentation." So I contacted some of my scientist friends and they reassured me, and I also checked this on Michigan State websites, that the mosquitoes that carry Zika and that carry, I think it's dengue fever, but I apologize if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly, are, cannot winter in Michigan, and there's never been an incidence of transmission in our state. And that in terms of malaria, the parasite also cannot survive in Michigan. And the cases of malaria in Michigan are all due to international travel. And I looked at the statistics. And I looked at the statistics for West Nile, and I think when they surveyed the bird pools and the mosquito pools in 2020, they actually found no West Nile in Isabella County, although there were a couple cases, you know, I don't know, I'm not a scientist, you could speculate that they contracted it from a mosquito in another county. And I don't want to make too much of the mosquito issue, but I just don't want the commissioners to think that I would ever suggest something that I thought was dangerous for the public health. Like Eric, my understanding is mosquitoes only breed in stagnant water, although they could hide in grass, and there's some evidence that having a richer native plantings and some longer grasses would actually encourage predators that would keep the mosquito population down in a natural way. So those are just some things that I'd like you to think about. Big takeaway for me would be, I'm really worried about this emphasis on cultivation. Not only does it suggest something you buy at a garden center, it also, I think, as others were demonstrating, it's kind of arbitrary, like what looks cultivated to one person may not look cultivated to another. So thank you.
Thank you, Joellen.
Good evening. My name's Nate Smith. I live at 634 South University, the same spot. It's great to hear so many people in support of what I came to talk about today, which is the lawn ordinance and thinking about revising it. And I also am not really a gardener. I, but I'm here to try to encourage the city to think about expanding the idea of what a proper yard should look like by thinking about this term of a planned natural landscape, which does, I feel like doesn't fit into the current code very well. And in order to do that, I would just like to share my own experience with my own front yard and just beg your apologies for my rambling on. I also took a look at the materials for today, and one of the things that stood out to me in addition to the aesthetics that Eric also mentioned was the idea of property values and the fact that an un, you know, kept lawn would harm the neighborhood, would, you know, would harm the community in, I guess, an aesthetic sense, right? If, you know, not everybody has the same kind of aesthetic sensibility. And I have to say that my interest in rewilding my front yard actually came from, in part, a kind of aesthetic sense, that my front yard looked terrible, frankly. We have a bunch of oak trees in our, in all of our property. Our front yard gets virtually no sun. It's, you know, the soil is sand, basically. And, you know, we have, we have hedges, and it's not a very rich, you know, place for grass to grow, where we, you know, we have a lot of grass and a lot of other parts of our property that get a lot of sun. This is, this is not the kind of place that my front yard is. So we tried to think about how to rewild that space so that we could get some native plants growing in there, getting some, you know, I feel like much needed biodiversity in our, in our front yard. So I just, you know, and one of the, one of the ideas here is that a planned natural landscape actually takes quite a bit of work. I mean, I was out in, you know, in the front yard, digging up sod, trying to get rid of as much grass as I could, planting, you know, anything from Yarrow to hardy geranium to, again, I'm not a plant person, I'm going to run out, you know, there's thyme and there's catman and things that do pretty well with, you know, bad soil conditions. And there's actually quite a bit of work. You have to, you know, in the fall, you have to set things up, and then there, you know, a lot of work goes into trying to, you know, put different kinds of plants in different kind of spots. And over a couple of years, and just not messing with what, you know, with what's there, we found that there were actually some native species that emerged, some wonderful little succulente kind of things that I can't even tell what they were. Some native asters showed up in our, in our front yard, some things that looked to me like orchids, but they couldn't be orchids, but I don't know what they, you know, what they were. And there was also some stray pieces of grass that were, you know, that were up there too that I, you know, wasn't able to kind of pull out. But that, that yard looked a lot better than somebody who kept their lawn mowed, and as the drought came in July and August, it was completely burnt, you know, and basically white, you know, with, you know, with the burnt out grass. I'm not sure that that's aesthetically pleasing either to have, you know, to have that kind of, you know, monoculture grass that, you know, in a place where it doesn't work. So I guess my sense is that even aesthetically speaking, even in terms of property values, that there are things that a planned, thoughtful, but naturalized environment could really do, not only to help the environment, but actually to help with the look of a, and feel of a community as well. So that's, that's my thought, and I really appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. And Michigan does have orchids, so it probably was, yes. All right. Are there anyone, is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay. At this time, we will close the public comment on agenda items, and we will move on to the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager descents.
Petitions and communications this evening includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission from July, minutes of the Traffic Control Committee from July, minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board from August, and the annual report on Experimental Aircraft Association Benefit to the Airport.
All right. At this time, we'll move to consent items. Are there any consent items that the commission wishes to take off there and move into the regular agenda? Seeing none, manager descents.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held September 25, 2023, approval of the minutes from the closed session held September 25, 2023, consider setting a public hearing for October 23, 2023, on the establishment of a property-assessed clean energy district, and approved resolution of intent on the same, consider setting a public hearing for October 23, 2023, on proposed pilot ordinance, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent items?
I move.
Is there a second?
I can add.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right. Our first public hearing tonight is on the ordinance to amend the city's snow and ice removal from the sidewalks. Manager descents.
Staff took input from the city commission at our May 22 work session regarding the ordinance to require, or regarding an ordinance to require the removal of snow and ice from sidewalks within the city limits. Currently, all commercial properties are required to clear sidewalks adjoining the property. The city staff also clears a designated route of about 30 miles of residential sidewalk at no additional cost. The city commission expressed an interest in seeing snow and ice clearing as a means to ensure walkability during all seasons. With that, we do want to turn it over to the Director of Public Safety, Paul Loria. He'll be able to discuss the changes of the proposed ordinance within, of the proposed ordinance ahead of the opening of the public hearing. After the public hearing, the city commission is asked to move to adopt the ordinance as provided.
Good evening, commissioners. You have the ordinance, a draft of the ordinance in front of you that would require property owners, residential property owners within the city to clear their sidewalk that joins their property or runs in front of their property within 24 hours of, or let me, clear their snow of any accumulation within 24 hours after a snow incident. There's a couple of things that you have to keep in mind. The downtown principal shopping district, they already have this requirement, so no change is there. The property owners along school routes are not exempt from this ordinance, even though the city will eventually do them. It's after all the main streets are plowed, so they would not be exempt from this. The Mission and Pickard Downtown Development Authority along Mission and Pickard Street already has the requirement as well, so there's no change needed there. The recently adopted International Property Maintenance Code doesn't address anything about public sidewalks, and it's important to remember that there's a process in place through the agreement we have with the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and their members that any tribal property or any tribal member who owns property on recognized Indian reservation is exempt from the ordinance. There's a special, a process that we go through, which is the tribal planning department for them to comply. So with that, if you have any questions?
Does the commission have any questions? Okay. If there are no questions, I will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to have comment or ask questions, they may come to the podium. They will be given five minutes. You'll be asked to state your name and address. If you're joining us by Zoom and wish to comment on this public hearing, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. You'll be let into the meeting. You'll be asked your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
All right. Are there any emails today?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then I'm going to turn this back over. We're going to close the public hearing, and we'll turn it back over to the commission on your thoughts, questions. Any clarification? Commissioner Ecke?
I looked at the map that we, that accompanied this document, I think maybe two weeks ago, this section where the sidewalk that runs from Broomfield through Crawford across Preston to the university. Am I clear that it is the city's responsibility to clear that?
Under the proposed ordinance, the city would continue that route and would continue to clear that, though that is only done after the streets are cleared. If the homeowner, if the city's unable to get it to it within the 24 hours per the ordinance, the homeowner would have to clear those routes.
Commissioner Bush?
We can definitely discuss this as a commission later, but if this is adopted, do you have any ideas or have you discussed any means or ideas to make property owners aware of any changes?
We will continue to do what we always do, use our method of educating the public on any change of notices. We wouldn't do anything different in regards to that. We wouldn't hide it. We would put it on our social media channels, all the different aspects of the website. So, yeah, we would follow all that.
I think it would be interesting to discuss other measures to promote. That's all that's, and maybe that's more our responsibility.
Commissioner Asman, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, for clarification for me, and maybe I missed this in the packet, is there like a standard or a minimum? I know the road has a minimum. Does the sidewalk have a minimum?
Not according to the ordinance. It talks any accumulation.
Okay.
Commissioner Ecke?
Is there any provision for, I understand that if the homeowners are unable to clear the sidewalk, that the city does that, and I'm familiar with that area because I know students, and I live around there, and students, you know, walk from Broomfield to campus, and homeowners around there sometimes do the clearing. But just in general, is there any provision to accommodate people who are unable, you know, because of mobility or some, you know, other condition, cannot do what we're asking them to do?
There's nothing carved out in the ordinance for that. It would be the responsibility of the resident and/or owner of the property. We don't have really anything in other ordinances for people who may have difficulty, say, cutting their grass, maybe that'll change later tonight. So they would have the option of hiring. I mean, there are, we can probably hook them up with some groups or organizations that would help with that, but as it sits right now, there's nothing specifically carved out for that.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. I will entertain a motion.
I hope that we accept the amendment to the ordinance as indicated. Second.
All right. We have a motion to accept the ordinance and a second. We will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ecke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Porchbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Motion carries. We move on to the next public hearing on an ordinance to amend the city parking ordinance. Manager descents.
City commission is asked to hold a public hearing to consider an update to the city's ordinance that establishes rules for parking. The amended ordinance modifies definitions to the previous ordinance, removes the even odd overnight parking system, and establishes a system for parking lot snow removal similar to the snow emergency process. I'm going to turn it over to Downtown Development Director, Michelle Sponseller, who will provide a more in-depth explanation ahead of the public hearing. After the public hearing, the city commission is asked to move to adopt the ordinance as provided.
Good evening, everyone. Your favorite topic, parking. Get excited. Come on. All right. Well, let's hit the highlights. Our existing ordinance was written in 1964, and as you might imagine, when we were doing the review process, found it a little easier to start from scratch rather than modify what was existing on the books. Changes, we'll hit the highlights. We revamped definitions encompassing terms such as dumpsters, construction trailers, and recreational vehicle parking. We recorded special agreements that we had already been in practice with but weren't currently in the ordinance. Two of those would be Fight Apartments, located at 119 South Franklin, action taken by the city commission back in 1987, and then, of course, 410 West Broadway with Michigan Community Capital documented in 2020. And we also incorporated electric car charging station regulations. The fourth is the transition from the even and odd overnight parking system to one aligns more closely with the existing snow emergency protocols. So let's talk about the even and odd system. In a short word, I will tell you that since I have been here, which is just a little more than 19 years now, it has always been difficult to explain the even and odd overnight system because it was, well, when, when does that even and odd system take place? And the short version is, well, it's at four o'clock in the morning. And most people, when you come home at night, you're not thinking, well, what is it even and odd at four o'clock in the morning? So as you might imagine, our residents found it a little bit confusing. So, and it was not responsive to weather conditions. It was simply whether it was even or whether it was odd, it was regardless of how much snow was falling, if there was ice that needed to be attended to. So what we're moving to is really a conditions-based system. So if there is an accumulation of snow or ice, or if there's a big snowfall coming, we can then employ the same techniques that we would for a snow emergency, reach out to those folks who have the overnight permits, because we will be keeping that in place, so we'll have contact information for them, and ask them periodically, as we need to, to move their vehicles. We can go in, we can address the whole lot, and then they can go back to parking. We don't have to worry about We don't have to worry about every single night. I'm going to guess we probably would employ this eight times a year based on snowfall. So it aims to reduce the frequency of moving vehicles because, again, our residents, they're not big fans of this, as you can imagine, and efficiently allows for proper maintenance of the lots during snow and ice accumulation. Those are really the highlights. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to help.
Vice Mayor Alsager.
How does this impact residency that live downtown that currently have to buy a permit? Is that still going to be in place?
Yep, they will still need a permit. However, I will tell you, just based on anecdotal interactions, they will be very happy to not have to move their car every single evening.
Commissioner Chapman.
Why does this take so long? I know this has been a huge problem for a lot of people, so thank you.
It's been a frustration, yes. To have only opened up the ordinance to address the even and odd system didn't make a whole lot of sense. But when we were looking at the accumulated changes that we were making, this was the time we should do this.
Commissioner Wingard.
When emails go out during a snow event and everything, we'll essentially be like, parking lot number eight is going to be closed for a snow removal, park elsewhere.
Correct. And at that time, what we'll actually do is not only simply say lot eight, it's lot eight located at, because not everyone knows the numbers like I do. And then I would actually take it a step further and make suggestions on where they should park. I think it would be important for them to say, well, where should I park? We'll give them that option as well.
As someone who's had numerous occasions where it's 11 o'clock at night, I realized I didn't move my vehicle. I appreciate this change, so.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, Michelle. At this time, we will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak on the amending the parking, city parking ordinance, you can step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be let into the meeting. Meeting, been asked for your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on the city parking ordinance? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom and no comments at this time.
Okay. Not seeing a rush to the podium, I am going to close the public hearing. City Commission, I will entertain a motion if there are no further questions or clarifications.
I'll move to accept the, this would have to be a new ordinance, though, because you said, oh, yes. Okay, so I move to accept the ordinance as, you know, developed, as presented. I could just simply say not accept, right? Just so I want to tell you.
Okay.
Not accept as presented.
I don't know if I can second that.
I should accept as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, we will go to a roll call vote. Commissioner Bush.
Yes.
Commissioner Asman.
Yes.
Commissioner Eke.
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wingard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager.
Yes.
Mayor Pirschbacher.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we are going to move on to new business. We're going to consider a sole source contract with TH effort to update the controls of the city hall HVAC system. Manager DeSens.
TH effort is the preventive maintenance contractor for the city's HVAC system. We received a bid from them to replace the HVAC control system for $81,205. Staff had budgeted $70,000 for the work and is asking for a budget amendment of $11,205. The goal of the upgrade is to achieve an energy star rating through Consumers Energy in the future. We are joined this evening by the director of our building department, Brian Kentsch, who will be able to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, Commissioner, commissioners, are there any questions?
Could you just talk a bit more about what that energy star rating means for the city?
Yeah, currently, can you hear me okay? Currently, our system that we have is, we've been struggling with the different pieces of equipment shutting on and off based on the schedules that we were having in place. We've had pieces of equipment that have run in 24/7. One of those things, those things were discovered during our energy audit during the pandemic through Consumers Energy. And since that time, we've been able to tame it a bit. But every once in a while, we're losing communication between the software and the hardware. And so what this will do, this will allow us to dial things in, both on our chillers, our boilers, our air handlers, and be able to shut the building down at 5:30 PM, which we would like to be able to do. And that takes us from our set points, which is typically 70 degrees, down to about 67 degrees throughout the entire building. By doing that, we should be able to take this building to the point where we would qualify for an energy star rating through our Consumers Energy. Currently, we are extremely far off from being able to do that. What that rating does is evaluates our building against similar structures and how it performs both energy efficient-wise and so on. So that's kind of where we're at with it. Yes.
Commissioner Eke.
Out of curiosity, how old is the current HVAC, what you have right now?
Yeah, we, this equipment was installed in 2007. It's all carrier-based equipment. The software that we're using, all proprietary-based equipment. With the new system, we're going with Niagara Controls, which will allow other contractors to come in and work on our systems. When we bid out our work for PMs here last year, we had one bid that came in, and we're hoping with this change that when we go back out for bids in the future, that we'll be able to get multiple bids to consider, so.
And how often is the HVAC serviced?
We service, we have a maintenance contract with TH effort. They're here at least once a month. We're doing complete filter changes, bearing, greasing, those types of things, once every semi-annual. And so, and then they monitor all of our software. So if we have issues with alarms on equipments and those types of things, they're sent notice right along with staff, so. And so far, we've been, we've had some pretty good, pretty good luck with our, with our current contractor. Been very pleased.
One last question.
Sure.
So if it's going to be updated, what is the timeframe? What timeframe do you have in terms of start to completion?
They're probably going to be able to take care of this within a month.
Okay.
Just ahead of the heating season, basically.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One of the things I will share with you is this, with our controls and so on, we're usually looking at about 10 years on replacement. So we're going to start programming this in for replacement, 10 years out as part of our CIP. So you'll see that next few years come back in, so, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion, any thoughts on this? Now entertain a motion.
That we accept the proposal to approve contract with TH effort to update the HVAC controls?
Will that include the budget amendment?
Yes, and the budget, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, we're going to move on to consider allocating general funds to continue to cover the cost of the outdoor ice rink. Manager DeSens.
All right. Since the operation of the city seasonal ice rink each year, the city commission is providing an accounting for the ice rink usage and the costs. Ahead of the consideration for the 23/24 ice rink season, the city commission is asked to consider future operations of the rink as well as approve a $2,000 budget amendment in the general fund to cover the cost of a new liner for the rink. We're joined today by the director of Parks and Recreation, Phil Biscorner. He'll be able to answer any questions that the city commission may have.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Chapman.
Well, she and I both know, last year, it costs $4,700 a day that the ice rink was available. What is going to change this year that would make that different?
Unfortunately, I can't predict that. Year one, we were open for 29 days.
Sure.
Year two, it was three.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately, that was kind of the discussion when we first started doing the ice rink was, it's the actual times that it will be open is out of our control.
So with, and I understand ice, you know, the weather is obviously a very, you can't determine that. But I see that there's like, I don't know, whatever, 117 hours of labor to do that also. So what is the labor for that? Is that people, do people, are people, I've never, I've seen it, but I've never been to it. Obviously, you could assume I don't ice skate. But do they, are people there, like are staff there while people are using the rink?
No. So the majority of those hours are to open and close because it is such a giant sheet of ice. It takes pretty much all hands on deck to get it set up, fill it up. But then throughout the year, it's sprinkled in because we have somebody there at night. So when everybody leaves, somebody will come on, will spray down, try to regrow the ice. And so that's where the majority of those hours come in. And just because it may not be cold enough, we still have to anticipate that it will get cold enough. So we're there sometimes, even though it was not worth it, so.
Commissioner Eke.
So this is for four months. Let me ask, so the people who use the ice rink, am I to assume that there is, they pay a certain fee? You know, it's free? Oh, that's now serious. So there is no way of recovering a little bit of what, of the expenditure from, you know, the usage? So how many people use this ice rink over a four-month period?
We're not out there counting people. But you can kind of have the same conversation about our walking paths, our tennis courts, our pickleball courts. We're not actually out there monitoring how many people. But when we have good ice, people do use it. I mean, there's no doubt about that.
Commissioner Bush.
I understand that weather would probably be, you know, would preclude this. But have you, has there been any discussion with maybe like Recreation and Parks at CMU doing a like, I'm sorry, I got way off track. Just events there, maybe utilizing some student internship opportunities or whatnot and scheduling an event or a promotion or a business sponsorship that brings something to, like, you know, sets up a food truck or something like that? Just maybe to raise more awareness? Because I certainly think that we've had a couple of years of disruption on weather for weather or, well, the first year didn't start until February or something, right? The year one, we, it was one year.
Year one, yeah, it was late in January because it took that long to get cold, cold enough.
Well, yeah, that was the first, yeah.
Yeah, but we still had it set up in December.
Oh, did you? Okay. So I don't think, I mean, I definitely understand, you know, Commissioner Chapman's concerns. But I also do think that sometimes it takes a while for something to catch on. And sometimes it takes a while for, you know, us to evaluate if it's worthwhile. And I think by maybe having an event where you can kind of engage the public and find out if it's used, that might be a good opportunity to.
So we have had some discussion on that. The issue comes back is there's no guarantee whatever weekend we set up. It would have to be more of a pop-up type event.
I have an idea. So it wouldn't be an, it wouldn't be an event necessarily where you would skate. But I think you, I think I brought this up last year, too, actually, like a swap? Like a, what about ice skate swap?
So we actually talked to the ice rink out at Morin. And they do something along those lines just because their equipment obviously cycles through. So we've always talked about kind of joining their efforts.
Yeah.
For the most part, they kind of own that market, I guess you could say.
Well, I'm talking, so they have, they have like community members come in? Like if my kid's 10 years old and I want skates for a 14-year-old?
Yep.
Like, that's, okay, they do something like that?
Yep.
So yeah, I guess that would be, can we reach out to them and be more involved? Or have them, do they promote the ice rink at all? Or is that cross to their interest, you think?
No, they definitely are in favor of the ice rink. We've had several discussions on that. So it, I mean, the whole reason why we even brought up the ice rink was because there's not that whole learn to skate type atmosphere out at the ice rink because it's booked.
Booked, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, I mean, we're playing with the elements is the hard part.
Vice Mayor.
Well, since this is a one-year proposal, and we know we had a decent year and a bad year, we can evaluate after this year and see if it's too many bad years and discontinue it.
Well, I think our capital investment was last year anyways. I mean, there's not much of investment this year, but I just wondered.
So there actually is, this year, we need a new liner.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But that'll be every couple of years. Yeah, yeah, right.
What is the longevity of the liner?
It just depends when we put it away. You know, that, we fixed it a lot last year. And so we started rolling it out this year, and it's pretty rough, so.
Commissioner Eke.
No, I actually, Vice Mayor Alsager has said what I wanted to say. You know, so, you know, we can do this and evaluate in terms of usage and cost and, and then.
Okay, I agree because you never know what is the true use of something until you have had it out there so people know where it is and they can use it for at least five years. Are there any other questions?
Well, just to follow up with that, I would like to perhaps formally ask of staff that we come up with ways. And would you share with us how, what ways we could, the staff could monitor usage? Just so we know what the plan for that is.
We have done surveys. But that, other than short of putting somebody out there, there's not a whole lot of ways that we can go about that.
That's probably where, you know, student interns would be, you know, helpful. They can just use Clicker. And how often is it, how long is it open at any given time?
It's open the entire time the park is open. If it's up, the roof ices.
From 8:00 AM to?
11 o'clock.
Okay, wow.
Commissioner Bush.
How was the survey distributed?
It was distributed through all of our channels, all the people that currently use our recreation programs.
Can I make a recommendation that QR code signage be like just a little piece of paper or laminate or something be tagged by the, and then it could be like, take this, do you use the rink? Click, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time. All right, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Okay, so I would keep moving. Does somebody else want to move?
I believe that we allocate general funds to continue the costs and to approve the $2,000 budget amendment for a new liner.
A second.
Brian and Brian, I think that's what it was.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
Oh, we have something to campaign on.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item to consider approving the GM Dealer Community Charging Program Agreement. Manager DeSens.
Following our meeting on August 28th regarding a proposed EV charging station program, staff had received an alternative program proposal from another firm. Staff had reviewed the proposed programs and found that the first offered program that was presented to the city commission, which is the GM Dealer Community Charging Program, was the most beneficial program. DDA Director Michelle Sponseller has spearheaded this project and will be able to answer any questions that the city commission may have. Following that, staff is asking for a motion to approve the GM Dealer Community Charging Program Agreement as presented and direct staff to sign all necessary documents.
Are there any questions?
This is the one that's not going to.
This is the one that's not going to cost us anything. They're gonna do all the maintenance and do all the.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So all they want is space to set it up?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have a sense of, I suppose it's, it's, it's an absurd question, never mind. I was just going to fi- find out, you know, how, how, how frequently the, the existing EV charging stations are used.
That's not, that's a very good question. I can actually answer that. We get a monthly report that tells me, it does not tell me who, it tells me individual users. So on average per week, there are eight separate users who are anywhere from two hours to sometimes ten hours, depending on the day of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
For rescuing me.
Commissioner Windcard?
Uh, was there something in the contract that prohibited both, us taking both contracts, I guess? Like, if it's free to us, like, like for, like, they cover the installation and everything.
So choose both the suppliers?
Yeah, I was just kind of cu-
Well, the, the equipment itself would have to be owned by one or the other, so I, I don't see how they could possibly do that.
Well, I mean, like, if they use different locations or anything.
Oh, you, uh, perhaps down the road, if we wanted to expand, we could come back and look to the other company then. Something we could look at. Vice Mayor?
And this one is to get three charging stations set up?
Three different locations.
Right.
Multiples in a couple of locations. So, uh, replace in parking lot two, Jackie Alley, uh, three that will be in parking lot three, and then one that would be back here behind City Hall. Or parking lot thirteen, if you're following along by the numbers. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Michelle. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we, I'll move that we accept, um, that we approve the GM Dealer Community Charging Program Agreement as presented and direct staff to sign all necessary documents.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
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 All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, we are moving on to our announcements on city-related issues and new business. Commissioners, do you have anything you would like to bring forward? Commissioner Bush?
I'd like to first state, I, I recognize the value of waiting till, till we see how a program pans out. Um, but in the case of the community concern being raised, um, in regards to the scooters, um, I do believe that this poses a little bit of a, of a safety, not only a safety, but accessibility concern, and I would like to know if any, um, commissioners would be interested in having a work session, um, to discuss, um, the program, um, prior to the one-year mark that we had initially talked about.
Well, I know that the, um, scooters will be taken off the streets November first. Um, and then it come, they come back in April.
So that sounds like a really good time to perhaps have at least some, the beginning of a discussion and maybe get some, uh, data from, from the, uh, from the companies, um...
Actually, I think it's one company now. I think Bird.
Oh, the other one, okay. So from the.
Oh, Spin's gone?
No, they're still here. They just, they're now merged.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Just get some data, maybe get some questions answered while they're not as busy.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Vice Mayor?
I'm wondering if we can get some information about kind of how we're ending the community garden season, if there's expectations that plots get cleaned out to a certain degree. And I'm just asking that because my daughter has to do that at hers down in Ann Arbor.
We have six days, October fifteenth. Um, I have to do it this week or this weekend, one of the two, so, yeah.
It might be useful to, um, in fact, I was wondering about that today because I was over there today, uh, maybe remind people because they may not remember, you know, that it's supposed to be done by the middle of October. I think it's easy to figure out who has plots and maybe, you know, send them a short notice or something like that to say, hey.
Are there any other announcements?
Uh, Clothing Yeech is having a fundraiser on October twenty-seventh. Um, it's a ten-year anniversary celebration, and, uh, they've hired a Elvis tribute artist to do a show and dinner, and so I think it'll be fun. So if you want to buy tickets, I can direct you to buy tickets.
You said that was October when?
Twenty-seventh.
Any other?
Mine is not an announcement, but it's a question. Can I ask?
Yes, you may.
All right, I have two questions. One has to do with signs, signage. Um, Isabella and Preston, looks like the sign for Preston Street is not there, because if you're not from town, you wouldn't know that that's Preston. So could somebody take a look at that? And then, uh, Broadway and Mission, um, uh, East Broadway and Mission, both sides, shrubs sticking into the sidewalk. I have no idea who is responsible for that. In order to see, if you're turning right, you'd have to actually move into the sidewalk and then...
I thought you were gonna mention the blinking light there that, that strobes. I thought that's on Mission and Broadway.
On Mission and Broadway, yes, that's true, so, okay. No, I'm not talking about that. I'm just simply talking about the physical, you know, obstru-, you know, sort of vision obstruction on both sides, you know, north and west.
Yep, I'll pass those on to the departments that will
Okay.
take care of those, yep.
Are there any other new business or announcements? All right, and I will move on to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to comment on agenda or non-agenda items, the public is welcome to come up to the podium. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If anyone is joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by phone, you'll be moved into the meeting and asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone out in publ- out in the public here that wishes to speak at this time? Anyone on Zoom?
There are no emailed comments or attendees on Zoom at this time.
Then I'm going to close the public, um, comment, and I'm going to ask, we have a work session and we have a closed session. I'm going to ask this, um, there be a motion presented for the closed session?
I, I know. Okay, so I move that we, uh, move into
No.
Sorry.
I don't need to do that yet, because I was gonna go to
We're doing the work session.
Oh, okay, okay, because usually we have to put this ahead of time.
No, 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 I was waiting for you to do it.
Would, um, would the commission like to take a short recess, or should we move right into the work session?
Short recess, please.
Please, yeah.
Three minutes, five minutes?
We will take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Oh, neat. Oh, really? Did you make these?
I engraved that. I bought a laser engraver.
What?
Yeah. So I'm making those as promotional, promotional items.
May I keep this up? Okay. Thank you. So you're all, you're all set there? Okay, good. Hey, uh, Steve?
So, you can either hit this, or you can do that.
Can I do this?
Yeah, you could do that, too.
It's gonna be up there?
Yep, and then this is what the next one is gonna be, so.
Okay.
This is current and the next. And your mic's on.
Do I, do I have to face this way?
Oh, no.
You can face wherever you want.
Because it'll be up there, too. And it'll be in front of you. So, yeah, we can even No, no change. Is that better?
Of safety dealing with these, um, scooters and electric bicycles.
Could be Chief Loria.
In terms of city planning, I feel the ice is I wonder whether I not part of the expenditures and usage, whether I could get the visitor recreational in terms of the program. Because then you also could have organized groups currently using ice rinks on a regular basis, you automatically have a control in terms of health in terms of usage. And, um, I also suppose you could do a better PR system in terms of talking about the money being expended and brought up. Bring up all that out of the mix, but on, I think love is a key word. It was something which somebody, this was a parent case, so pray I could go for it. Thank you, yeah.
Absolutely, no. Thank you for your suggestions for this.
Well, and I'd be glad to do that for the other groups we have within the community, because I, I honestly, we, we're going to have a public forum that's going to show you those. This is well aware. As we do know, the examples are from the whole thing, as we said, the whole thing is the place. We've got all the bits that we need. I have very mixed feelings right now, given the water treatments. But still, I would imagine they are a group that does tremendous work. At some point, I would be glad to see.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, only the best one to ever walk out on the mat. Your daughter works for Ann Arbor? Oh, the youth academy. Gotcha. Yep, gotcha. Hey, can I mess with all these buttons?
Please.
Hi, Cash. I think I want to bring up the words. We're gonna get back to the meeting now.
And that's all I wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean, really, like, where was he directed with all the, like, marijuana talks that we need to therapy?
Commissioner Ake?
Right? Tensions were high. Are you good?
All right, we're gonna start our work session on weed and tall grass ordinance, and I think we're going to start with Director Loria.
Thanks. Um, I gotta do a few disclaimers. I am here to provide the, the information. You guys obviously will make the determination. I have no opinion one way or the other. Um, so you, you can criticize what I put in the slides, and I'll be more than happy to listen and, and all that, but I was just trying to be fair and come up with pros and cons of everything. The second disclaimer is, I'm gonna say obnoxious weeds. I, obnoxious just doesn't work for me. So if I say obnoxious, just, just roll with it.
Are they being, are they just being rude?
So as, as, as a couple of the, uh, public comment speakers talked about, uh, the key word in, in, in our ordinance, uh, is cultivated, and it can mean different things to different people. Um, but the fact that, to me, it means taking care of, um, it doesn't talk about anything about, at, at least in my mind or in the ordinance, doesn't talk about getting them from Walmart or a nursery. That's not, um, anything that's addressed in the ordinance, nor do I believe cultivated is, is that. Um, what it does talk about that is unlawful is any weeds or grass of twelve inches in height, okay? So we gotta keep that in, uh, into perspective and say that if you wanted a yard of tulips, you can have a full yard of tulips. You can have a full yard of, um, I don't know, uh, do, plants that grow, that, that are cultivated flowers, cultivated trees, cultivated shrubs that are two feet. You can have all that. But once you have grass or weeds in excess of twelve inches, you're in violation of the ordinance. So you can have the flowers, the grass in between. Once it goes twelve inches, now you're in violation. Uh, our ordinance lists weed types. I Googled every one of these, and basically what I found is that these species are evasive. And if you've ever dealt with an invasive species, um, they are persistent. Um, my, uh, my wife planted some Japanese cotton weed. She said, oh, it's bamboo. Yeah, it wasn't. So I, I'm very familiar with what, um, or Japanese knotweed is what it was. Um, I'm very familiar with what an invasive species is. I'm very familiar with what an invasive species is. These are cultivated and uncultivated to me. Okay? I drove around the city. It wasn't hard. The cultivated one to me is something that is, looks and appears to be taken care of. Spend some time in there. The uncultivated one is, it's just growing. It's growing. There may be flowers in there. But barring the initial planting, very little upkeep. Again, in my opinion, you may disagree, but in my opinion, the one thing that we need to consider in this is the right of way. And I know you guys refer to Ann Arbor a lot. And Ann Arbor has a very strict ordinance, if you were to look at it. And they do not allow any cultivation in the right of way. We would have to get Jason Moore involved, but that's something to consider. Because the last thing we want to do is maybe not address that and then have someone do one of the, or if you guys approve it, some sort of wild habitat or flower garden. And then our DPW pulls up and they're going to dig it all up and upset some people. So as it stands today, we don't have anything against it. But I don't, again, I didn't stop at this person's house and say, you know, if they have to dig up the right of way, your garden or what you have here is going to be dug up. So it's something that we should consider as well. Again, just some more pictures.
Nice.
I'm not going to go through all these word by word, but they brought up biodiversity to support local ecosystems. I'm all for that. You know, the, there's animals that eat the insects, insects that do things for flowers. And then we got the human aspect. We all need to live together and function together in harmony. And I think that's one of the pros. Reduce maintenance costs. I know there's a lot of talk about climate change and going green and all that. Again, I look at, can you have a manicured lawn and have something that isn't contributing to global warming? Sure, you can get an electric mower now. So I mean, there's, there's counter arguments and counterpoints, I should say, to everything. The cons, again, if you're a homeowner that likes or that takes care of their lawn meticulously, if you've ever lived next to someone who doesn't and you don't like dandelions, good luck.
Have you been talking to my neighbor?
What's that?
Have you been talking to my neighbor?
No, no. You will, if you're committed, you will dump so much fertilizer and stuff on your own lawn, enough for both of you to get rid of the dandelions. So again, I know aesthetics are in the eyes of the beholder. I get that. That's why you guys get to make the tough decisions. Health and safety issues, you know, we looked, or the city manager who also participated in the research, you know, there's one ordinance that cites out hay fever. You know, you can't have this to prevent hay fever. We talk about people with breathing issues or whatnot. You know, and again, alls you have to do is be here in June and you can see, it looks like it's snowing, you know, with all the cotton going through. Collects on my air conditioner and I get upset because I think it's going to burn out, so. You know, the fire hazard part, I have the fire chief here, he could talk to that. I don't, again, I would see that in dead grass more than any sort of vegetation growth or green growth. Neighborhood cohesion, I can tell you, frustration between neighbors when it comes to standards is the number one killer of neighborhood cohesion. The number one. When you got a broken down car parked in the street, when you got stuff spewing in your, you know, spread out your lawn or whatnot, people do get frustrated. I'm not saying that this is going to cause a huge uproar if it's allowed. I'm just saying it's something to consider. When you talk property maintenance, again, we just implemented that international property maintenance code. We just passed an ordinance that says you're going to shovel your sidewalk. And, you know, there's some consistencies, things there. What are we trying to accomplish? And I think that when you let things go, it becomes more costly, more difficult to manage. And over time, if we do have to exercise any of those ordinances, it could be a lot more costly. Property values, I, you know, again, I don't know. There was an argument about those, how it impacts them. I think it's probably, again, in the eyes of the beholder. You know, they, someone may come, look at a house. I don't want to buy it because the person next door has an uncut lawn. Okay. I'm sure there's those scenarios. So I looked, I tried to find specific ordinances that allow this wild type of growth and whatnot. And I mean, there are some exceptions, but with the exceptions, there's always the word cultivated in there. And I haven't seen anything that just says, you know, let your, your, your grass, or let your, in front of your house grow wild and that'll be the end of it. So again, there's a lot of local ordinances out there. We refer to Ann Arbor quite a bit. Theirs is very strict. I know a couple of the people mentioned the natural, what was it, natural lay of the land or, I can't remember the exact term.
Planted natural yard.
What is it?
A planted natural yard.
Yeah. And if you read Royal Oaks, which I looked up, again, it has the word cultivated in it. So it isn't, there's definitions to those things. So the, as far as the mosquitoes go, you know,
We have a river running through the city.
Yeah. Mosquitoes are mosquitoes. I, when I go outside, I put a half a gallon of bug spray on because I hate mosquitoes. But I don't blame it on tall grass or anything like that, so. The transmission of diseases, you guys seen the article in the paper about the cow up north? You know, that supposedly got it from the, from a mosquito. I don't know if we're going to be taking blame for allowing lawn grass and all of a sudden people are getting malaria or something like that. I don't necessarily subscribe to that. Again, quality of life. The DNR talk about mosquitoes a little bit differently as it pertains to grass. If you go on their website, their website talks about that they like to hide in grass and shady areas and that the way to prevent this is to get sunlight and mow your grass regularly. And we already talked about Ann Arbor's ordinance. So with that, if you have any questions, I will say that from a code enforcement point of view, it's our most common ticket. It's our most common citation by far. And typically, you know, while we follow the process, you guys know what the process is, so. And then I just threw this in there. Cities must strike a balance between property owner rights, community interest when considering regulations regarding tall grass and weeds. So I think there's a balance to be struck here, struck here in my opinion. But again, I look at our ordinance and I don't see anything preventing someone from turning their entire gar, or turning their entire yard into some sort of garden as long as it's taken care of.
By the way, we have a number that look, a number of yards that are gardens.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's a member on this board that has, you know, a very well-maintained garden. You know, you drive by in the summer and you just see weeds flying up over the top, you know, picking weeds and whatnot. And that to me is cultivated, taken care of, while also having a beautiful, beautiful yard. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Right. Mary?
I just want to make a comment of reacting to what Director Loria has said, that I agree with you on the right of way being important, that we need to have good, clear, open corners so people can see and safely drive. But I have a couple disagreements. One is of the two pictures you showed first, you know, the manicured and then the one that looks really wild. I like them both.
Okay.
And the other thing is, you know, you're talking about a lot of wild, tall, tall of grass, but I think based on the comments of some of our speakers, one of their goals is to get rid of grass. So that it won't be so much tall grass and weeds, it'll be more flowers and vegetation.
And there's nothing in our ordinance right now that prevents that.
Yeah.
The problem is, is if there's weeds or grass in between the flowers that grows to those, you know, the 12 inches, that's where it gets dicey.
In fact, the one gentleman was talking about some grass grew. And, you know, he was trying to not have any.
Yeah.
Not any.
Fisher Bush?
Right, I was going to say, it's far harder to completely get rid of grass than it is to get rid of, you know, native plants. But I'd be concerned with the language that says, you know, I think it said flowers, shrubs, trees and agricultural crops. And so there are native grasses and that will grow higher than 12 feet in their natural state.
12 inches.
If you're in Kansas. 12 inches, yeah. I mean, actually, speaking of that, Kansas is a great place to study that type of, because you see that the root systems of the native plants, especially native grasses, go far deeper into the soil and really, you know, does a lot for...
I, you know, I think as somebody who gardens, you know, I do think that what we need to do is to specify, you know, to be specific about, you know, about what we, you know, what we want, what we expect. The right of way issue is, at least a concern with the right of way is important for me. And I say this because I remember when the city was replacing the water pipes on my street. And, you know, I had a garden, even though there's no sidewalk on my street, you know that. So, you know, so they had to dig up the whole area. And I had a garden there and I'm like, yeah, we need this. Like, fine, go ahead, clear it. You don't mind? No, clear it. So I think, you know, if people are going to have, I know, I have noticed people with gardens in, like, in the sidewalk, you know, the median, you know, very close to the street, between, you know, after the sidewalk. So, but if people are going to have gardens that approach the sidewalk, I think it's important to let them know that if the city needs, you know, right of way, that the city is going to have to dig up this, just let them know ahead of time. I'm, you know, I mean, you know, listen, city wants to dig up the whole place, please go ahead, make your day. I'm not worried. But other, but other people may not, you know, be that receptive or that willing to say, fine, dig it up, do whatever it is you want to do. I know that I have an adjoining piece of properties, you know, that, you know, it's here by three of us, where my neighbor and I, you know, have to mow that section all the time because the other neighbor never mows his section. And if we don't mow it, the grass will be about six feet tall. I'm not kidding, no, seriously. So I mow it, the other neighbor mows it, but the other one, huh, doesn't care. And as somebody who has phobia for snakes, you know what? You know, I don't want to mow. I understand the need. I really would prefer not to. But I worry about other things. I worry about raccoons, you know, hiding in those places. I worry about rats hiding in those places. I worry about snakes. You may not care, worry about that. I don't care what it looks like. It freaks me out, right? So, and I'm saying this because of somebody who has that kind of phobia. And I know that there are also people around who worry about those issues. So I do think that whatever we agree on or however we develop this, it has to be an ordinance that is fair to everybody. I, you know, I, you know, again, I want to make sure that our residents feel that they're okay, that we're also listening to them. You know, there is nothing wrong with people growing different, you know, species, native plants. And I have some of those in my yard. But I do think that it is important to also be considerate towards other people who may not necessarily want gardens. And I think it's the balance that we have to strike somehow. I don't know how we're going to do this. I'm having a very nice relationship with it done here. It's okay.
Sorry, it's okay. Fisher Bush?
I would also like to have some conversation about people who may be in the process of transitioning. A lot of the people who've come and spoke. And I will point out in terms of public comment, all of the comments I believe we receive have been in favor of maybe some more accountability with this, with this ordinance. But have indicated that it's a process. And I really, I think it could be a good opportunity for the city of Mount Pleasant and us and our future goal of being more environmentally sound and more communicative, all the things, all the good things. If we, if we use this as an opportunity. And forgive me if I'm kind of out of step with things, but is this something that we'd be hoping to come forward with, you know, like any kind of public hearing?
Well, I think at this point, anytime we have a work session, we are, we are going over the information and then we are giving the staff direction.
Right.
I agree that, I think that we can find a happy medium here, but I also want to always consider the safety that is involved. Anytime you have a house that is on a corner street or is on a corner, you, and they have large bushes, even just, you know, even just hedges and stuff right up to the road. You can't see past them. You have to ease out into the intersection. And that's going to be the same as if we have large, even just pampas grass, which is very large and very bushy, can cause, you know, disruptions in sight when you're trying to drive through there or riding your bike or, you know, we have to take into consideration why on our major roads do they mow so far in? Well, it's because you can see the animal then before it runs out in front of you, right? Before you take it out. So those are the things we have to consider. There's a lot of reasons why we do certain things. But I think that having a natural, well-planned yard is perfectly fine as long as we give the... As long as we give the, the boundaries, we give the understanding of what needs to happen and how we can do this in a way that is going to provide safety for, you know, all of the residents and, you know, just be well done. And it doesn't have to cost a lot. I know that a lot of people, when they start putting in um, natural planned yards, will start in, you know, in phases, you know, starting small areas and moving around and understanding how that is going to work and going to plant swabs and, you know, all of that stuff.
When, Commissioner Windgar?
Yeah, no, I agree with a lot, a lot of what you're saying. And I think the important thing is just kind of remembering that it's, people aren't suddenly just saying, well, I don't want to mow my lawn anymore. There's this natural landscaping thing. That's what I'm doing now. It's, it's more than that, especially like the city residents who come into us with this interest. It's people who are putting thought behind what they're doing so we can give guidelines of like expectations and everything along with it and kind of clearly define that. Uh, like as far as like cultivation and everything, especially if that's seeming to be an issue with like some residents are bringing forward, perhaps we could define what that means in the eyes of the city. Um, so that way it's kind of like, I don't know, 96.05, like subsection D or something. Cultivation is X thing, is making sure you're taking care of the plants or, um, I'm rambling now, um, lost in thought. Um, yeah, I'm gonna regroup my thoughts here and lost.
Commissioner Asman?
Can you, instead of, I mean, like we've all talked about compromise and balances kind of seems to be the, the theme, but can you have like a application process, I guess, if you will, as opposed to a change of the ordinance? I'm just curious because.
You mean like an exemption?
Yeah, you know, if, if the, the natural yard is your thing, why not apply for it? And leave everything else in place. I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Commissioner Ecke?
Yeah, that's, you know, I mean, I actually did think about an exemption, um, when I was reading this at once, wondering how that would work. Um, I mean, I suppose it could work, but then it could also be problematic where, you know, it's not that exemption or at least the criteria for the exemption is not clear for a lot of people. Then somebody comes in and goes, well, you know, this person has this, but I don't get to do this. What's going on? So I, I do think that, you know, what we need is a clear protocol or policy in terms of whatever the height this is gonna be, you know, between 24 inches and 48, you know, inches, 48 inches, by the way, it's about here. Okay? So, you know, um, i- if that's what we want, and then even if, if that's what they want and that's further away from the sidewalk, I guess, you know, maybe you won't bother about that. But I think what I heard from the people who were talking to us, I heard want support for this, and I am supportive that we have, you know, an environment that is biodiverse. We do need that, uh, given everything that's happening climatically, climatically, you know. But I also heard them asking for clarity. That's, that's, at least that's two of the people who came, and my colleagues. So when I'm talking about cultivate, yeah, you're talking to English professors, okay? So that's, they're looking at it from that perspective. But I think I'm hearing them asking for clarity. What do we mean? What does that mean? How are we defining it? And if we can define those terms and define, you know, all these boundaries, I don't see why this would be a problem, you know. So maybe that's what we need to do and, and.
Would it, does it make, um, does it make any, I, I mean, I, I don't think there's any way around not opening up the ordinance. You know, and now is the, now is the time to do it, you know, we're in the winter months. Um, you know how we have the list of, of weeds and that evasive species? Does it make any sense to then, if, if the desire is native grasses, to list the native grasses that makes them exempt from the 12 inches?
Of course, yeah.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, because for, for the community garden, we were given correct conditions, saying you can, you know, these are the things that people shouldn't have there.
What I don't want though is I don't want to miss, um, I'm making this up because I don't know about grasses, but uh, Kansas prairie grass, and that's not on the list that I overlooked. Um, but if you want them native to Michigan, I'm sure that isn't going to be that difficult to, to find. But if there's a desire for others, um.
You have to ask whether those are, I guess, I don't know.
I, I think, yeah.
Yeah, could we just add native, I'm sorry, could we just add native?
Well?
Um, plants to that list and then maybe direct community members to resources? Um, and I will say too, we could also use this as an opportunity. So I, I'm a little bit, I've got a little bit um, of concern about the application process. I thought about that too. But again, that has this feeling of ex- of.
Exclusion.
Exclusion. And it's, and, and I think also, it sounds like more paperwork.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, um, we could operate under a chance to um, educate and also be educated where we could, like, because it's not like you immediately get, you gotta find, like, right off the bat. You're gonna get, like, so let's say somebody is trying to establish a native a garden. Let's say they own a canoe livery and they don't get a chance to maintain their front yard all summer long. Let's say they get a ticket. And then um, it says, um, uh, you're, we have some concerns or blah, 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 some nice way of saying it, you can ask AI or whatever. And, and just say, um, and then maybe ask for an opportunity to be like, if you, if you would like to hear more, you know, contact this number about, and tell us about your garden, or if you'd like to contest this or something like that. Sorry, that was really bad. I should have asked AI. No. Okay, so, um, so if, um, so in the flyer, like, let's, because I think what's happened with some of these people who have come here tonight is they are trying to establish naturally planned landscaping, and they've gotten tickets. Or they've gotten, have they? I've gotten the impression from at least a couple of the people who spoke tonight. I know, I believe.
I would have to look.
Yeah, Delicia, Delicia definitely got tickets. So my point would be, like, make the, if we made the, the warning or the notice also like inclusive of the fact that we do want to recognize naturally planned landscapes, but whoops, we may not be understanding or planning. Is that making sense to anybody?
Well, I, 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 I think I understand, but in, it, I don't want to get into specifics, but I think in, well, I have to get into specifics. I guess in that specific case, if the grass is 12 inches, if the weeds are 12 inches, it doesn't matter about the, because as the ordinance sits right now, it's 12 inches.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if they claim, but no, my, my plants are cultivated and this grass that you've mistaken for weed is not and da, 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 da. Like, I just want, I just want our notice to be maybe acknowledging the fact that we, that we, that natural landscaping is an option so that we could be like, inclusive, yeah. Um, but also as a way of education. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm.
If we're, if we're struggling with what cultivating means, I think naturally planned, um, landscaping, I, I mean, I.
That might be a better term.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned, yeah, and I, this is coming out of concern for the fact that I think the reason why this discussion, you know, got as far as it did is we had so much response from the community. And these are people who were ha- trying to have maybe not, maybe not as much as I think or. The number one complaint, neighbors complaining against, uncapones?
Tall grass and weeds is the number one complaint?
Neighbors complaining against, yeah.
To code enforcement.
Yeah.
It's not just the number of tickets that are written, but we get a very large number of complaints. You know, we joke about it and call it up, it's tall grass season. It is because we get a lot of that.
And many, and many of those I'm sure are actual tall grass and noxious weeds. I'm just talking about something for the, for these folks who are trying to establish a naturally planned garden.
So one of the, one of the, one of the ordinance was Royal Oaks. Let me just read you to what they, first of all, your, your suggestion goes a long way because they say native plants. Are those plants identified as native plant species in southern lower Michigan by Michigan State University? Native plants?
Exactly.
And ecosystem services.
Exactly.
A, a copy which shall be maintained by the city. So, um, um, yeah, here's what it says about, uh, planned natural landscaping is a planned, intentional, and maintained landscaping or cultivation of native plants. Planned natural landscaping is not intended to allow the property owner to ignore lawn care duties.
Okay.
And then it says, planned natural landscaping shall be cut back at least annually to remove dead or unmaintained growth. A person who is an owner of real property shall cut or remove any dead or unmanaged growth on his or her property, including a natural planned landscaping. Planned natural landscaping shall not be designed to attract rats.
Oh, wow.
So, so I don't know if that means that when you have landscaping like that, you can expect a rat problem. But I'm gonna get funny here, we got a lot of cats.
Well, but see, but here's the thing, I, there's, there's nothing that prohibits us from appropriating, you know, there's, there's nothing that stops us from appropriating some of that language, you know?
No.
And, and I was, in fact, I'm glad that you went to MSU. I, I, yeah, I'm glad that you, MSU is mentioned there. I used to work at MSU. I was thinking MSU and 4-H, you know? So direct them to that. Use, let's use that language, you know, appropriate some of it, modify it, make it our own.
Are, are we allowed to send that language out to the commission on like a Friday update? Well, I'll make sure that, um, I get a copy to the city manager and then you guys can put eyes on it, um, for it.
Mary?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment about something that was said earlier. I think it kind of muddies the waters too much if we go to exemptions and permits. I think it just needs to be in an ordinance.
Yeah, we, I, it, it looks, it seems clear to me that we said that exemption would be problematic. That's the point that I was making, you know, and Brian is here too, he can, you know, I heard him nod and say, yeah.
I was just curious, I know nothing about the.
Is, is there any, um, is there any openness to saying nothing in the right of way?
Yes.
Whatever's that?
I, 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 I would think about the right of way because I know there's people who currently do gardening in the right of way. You know, this house I drive by every, if, it might be worth it to just say, if you garden in the right of way, you have to acknowledge that we might need to have access. Like, I don't know if that would be like in a, in a code sense, like putting that in there where it says.
And I think, I think that there also has to be a height.
Yeah, see, and that's, that, I think with what you talked about, you know, kids coming out or do, you know, if you keep that right of way clear, in that, hey, look, it's grass, um, that may go a long way, um, to eliminating some of those concerns.
Not even approaching the sidewalk either. My house is by the sidewalk. If you drive by there, everything around there is you know, I mean, you can actually see, no, seriously.
Some kind of setback from the sidewalk.
Yeah, no, I have pruned it so that, you know, you can see because, um, I even walk up and go, and I look at it and say, oh, wow, if I'm driving and this is too far, I can't see. So I prune it really sharply. So maybe highlighting that, making sure that we have, I think sometimes the problem is that we assume people understand these, you know, issues. But if, and they're looking at the ordinances and they don't see any statement or any language that specifies for them. I want it to be specific because people will quibble over little things, you know. So let's specify what we don't want where, what we want where, what we, you know, what this involves.
Commissioner Bush?
I was gonna say some part of that and basically, um, we should have some language that says, nothing can obscure visibility for transporta- for, for vehicles and pedestrians and, and I'm trying to think of a word that.
Yeah, impaired, yeah.
Or mobility.
Versus, versus nothing in the right of way. You would rather see something, um, about uh, no vision obstructions, um.
I think it should, yeah, specifically reference for traffic safety and also accessibility.
Yeah, okay, yep.
I think this might be less of a code enforcement thing and more just like a city program that could be considered in the future. But Brian, um, Brian's point, or Commissioner Asman to specify which one. Rather than like doing registration or like getting a permit or anything, we could do, well, people who are doing this are putting in research into this already, it would seem at this point. We could have some kind of like get your lawn natural landscaped, like certified with the city of like, where if you meet certain specifications, we could have a yard sign that someone could put in their lawn, like, it might be an education way so that way they are more intentional about meeting certain standards. So that way they're more likely to fit within our definitions of things. Again, just an idea of throwing it out there, but I'm getting a lot of thought bubbles popping up over here, so I'm gonna.
Well, I, one thing I know is that it doesn't matter if you have a well-manicured lawn or you have a naturally planned landscaping. They both require your attention. They both require.
Maintenance, yeah.
Not just having a naturally planned landscaping does not mean that you never do anything with it. You still have lots to do. You still have plants to move and prune and reshape. So it's not that, I don't think people are saying, I just don't want to mow my lawn because there's just as much work in mowing your lawn as there is in taking care of a garden like that.
I haven't said anything because I don't understand any of this. I have a well-manicured lawn that I spend a lot of time on, but I don't understand the, uh, I, well, no, 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 I just don't understand the natural landscape. Um, but I do, I do, I think of, as we're talking about, I see some of these pictures. I, I know, you know, we've talked about blight and things to, to make our neighborhoods look nice. And so, I, I mean, if, if what you're saying is that this idea is to make things nice and not just, I mean, that makes a little more sense, but I, I, I do fear that people won't do that. That they'll, that they'll look at this and say, well, here we go, you know, I don't know. I, I, I don't understand enough.
Yeah, but if we specify, you know, again, if we carefully define the terms.
Well, we have, but we have defined terms right now for tall grass. Doesn't make any difference. That's the number one.
But I don't think it's gonna get any worse. I don't think it's gonna get any worse.
But we did something close to that with the International Housing Code where we say, hey, these are the, you know, here, here is the criteria. If you don't do this, you know, given what we've given to you, this is what's going to, I mean, we do have, you know, if the code enforcers decide you're not complying, it's an issue of compliance, then this is what, you know, they'll do. They'll probably just simply issue you a warning. Number one, warning, get this together. Number two, we'll work with you. Number three, and then you get a ticket that you don't want to get. I don't think, I think we need to just simply carefully, you know, do close to what we did with the International Housing, you know, code and, and, you know, pieces that were placed.
The property maintenance code.
Maintenance code, yeah. When we defined, you know, the process, here are the expectations. This is the process. And this is what we'll do if we don't meet, you know, these guidelines. I agree with you that if we don't, people will just go, hey, they don't care. Let's just have grass. Let's just have this.
I don't think people are gonna notice. I don't think the people, I don't think people who don't care about their lawns will probably not notice.
But Brian is right. Some people might do that. I'm not saying everybody would. I wouldn't. You probably wouldn't. But some people might, and I, I understand what he's saying.
Okay, so do we have, does the staff have an, an understanding of all of this, of what we want you to come back with?
I think this is my thought, uh, from hearing the discussion.
I think this is my thought, uh, from hearing the discussion on this, we'll send the language of the Royal Oak, uh, ordinance to the city commission, look for a few more, uh, possibilities as well and send that to the city commission. I think maybe some further review of ordinance examples of what is out there, uh, might help us at least find some common ground because I do hear a lot of varying opinions. I hear, uh, folks wanting options and, and options ranging from, let's, let's just allow like a full native, uh, kind of lawn here to maybe something more restrictive. So I think that if we come back with some various ordinance examples, maybe we can find some common ground in those in the future.
If you could come up with some images of naturally planned landscapes, I think that would be helpful because I think a lot of people think that it just means that the whole yard is full of milkweed and it doesn't mean that at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, goldenrod.
I think we also got to understand that there's going to be loopholes with any system, you know, and obviously you try to minimize those sort of trade-offs. I just realized today, there's nothing that would stop me from just replacing all my grass with mint, other than I think people would literally try to like forcibly get me to leave, at least in my neighborhood.
Yeah, unless you have people who like mojitos.
I have a lot of mint, you know, it's like, but you know, you could also consult the 4H people just down this, you know, over there.
Yeah.
The, the language, uh, really in that Royal Oak ordinance about Michigan State, um, plant, you know, college, I, I, I mean, I gotta believe that's gonna, um, address a lion's share of, of what is native. So.
Yeah, look up the, um, MSU Cooperative Extension Service.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sure they have something in there.
Yeah, anybody who develops turf grass should, would, yes, they actually.
All right. So I think we have some idea of where maybe the commission wants to go, kind of, sorta. All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion for a closed session.
I moved in.
I'll second.
I moved into a closed session pursuant to section eight, wanting you to, of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation.
Seconded.
All those in favor say yes.
Okay.
Roll call vote, I'm sorry. Okay. Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavon?
Yes.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alziger?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
We have a quorum. All right, motion carries. All right, so we're going to take a moment to, um, go into closed session. I think we have to close down and is Steve still here? Oh, he's here, yeah.
Thank you.
That's right, I thought he was. I just didn't see him.